All right, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting for the city of Minnetrista, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. First order of business, number one, a reminder, if you have cellphones with you, please put them on silent or airplane mode so they don't disrupt the meeting. And then the second order is, please join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome everyone this evening. We have some very special presentations tonight, but before we do that, I'm gonna make an introduction of our staff and council. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Kathleen Refkin, Anne McGregor, Peter Vickery, and we have Claudia Lacy, who is absent this evening. Then on the end, we have our city engineer with WSB, Allison Fousky. Our director of public works is Gary Peters. And then we have an empty seat, she's standing back there, ready to take some pictures. We have Ally Paul Foose, who is our director of administration. We also have our city clerk, Don Matzko, with us, taking notes this evening. And then to my right, we have Jasper Krugel, who is our city administrator, Brian Grimm, who is our finance director, and then Sarah Sansalo, who is with Kennedy and Graven, our attorney. And then on the end, we have chief of police, Paul Falls. Again, welcome. We also will be videotaping this, and as we move along, if you wanna later on look at it once again on YouTube, it will be on our website in just a few days. So with that, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. I'm just gonna make one minor change. We have on three special presentations this evening. We're gonna do our police officer swearing in first, that's number one and most important. And then second, we're gonna talk about the Whale Tail Lake alum treatment. We have Brian Flatch with us this evening. And then we're gonna move on to the very informative two thousand and twenty-two financial report and audit. So with that, I have no other changes. Is there a motion to approve the pre- any other changes or additions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as I stated?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, I think. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes for oh. So like I said, we have a swearing in of our police officer, Officer Joshua Brown, this evening. I'm going to first hand it over to Police Chief Paul Falls, and then we'll do the swearing in.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. It's always an honor to swear in new officers, and tonight it's kind of a special occasion because we're swearing in Officer Josh Brown, who used to work for us in the past. And so we're really excited that he's decided to come back and join our team again. So definitely a great addition to our, to our agency. So with that, Officer Josh Brown began his employment with the city of Minnetrista on Wednesday, March eighth. Officer Brown is our thirteenth officer and has been assigned to patrol after a very short field training process due to his many years of experience. Normally, the field training process is anywhere from twelve to sixteen weeks with a brand-new candidate. Officer Brown has almost seven years of police officer experience, and so especially with this department, some of that with this department, and so his field training was a day and a half. So we were literally able to just hand him the keys, he knows where to go and what to do. So again, we couldn't be happier to have him back. Officer Brown graduated from Normandale Community College in two thousand and eleven with an associate's degree in law enforcement. Officer Brown has been a licensed EMT since two thousand and thirteen. Officer Brown worked for the Dakota County Sheriff's Office as a corrections deputy from two thousand and fourteen until two thousand and sixteen. Officer Brown worked for the Minnetrista Police Department from September of two thousand and sixteen until June of two thousand and twenty-one. And then Officer Brown worked for the Wake Park Police Department from June of two thousand and twenty-one until March of two thousand and twenty-three. So as I said earlier, we are excited to have Officer Brown back on our team, and I can't say that enough. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mayor Whalen, Lieutenant Squires, and Officer Brown up to the podium.
So again, we are always excited to welcome and to swear in new officers. So this is a great privilege. Our entire council supports the police department, and we know the sacrifices you make, and we know the commitment you have to our community, and it is greatly appreciated. So with that, if you wanna raise your hand and repeat after me, can you hear me if I'm not right enough? Okay, never mind, we'll do this. Okay, repeat after me. On my honor.
On my honor.
As a member of the Minnetrista Police Department.
As a member of the Minnetrista Police Department.
I will uphold the mission.
Will uphold the mission.
Of the department.
Of the department.
By fighting crime.
By fighting crime.
And promoting safety.
And promoting safety.
I will uphold my badge.
I will uphold my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
And the public trust.
And the public trust.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the state of Minnesota.
The laws of the state of Minnesota.
The values of this community.
The values of this community.
And the policies of our department, so help me God.
And the policies of our department, so help me God.
Thank you, and welcome again. Thank you. I want to show my friends, I'll say that for you.
Can you tell us the shortage?
Put it back.
Thank you. Do you write down what you're gonna call it?
I should make work with the cake.
Okay.
Be sure to get more cake before you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, get more cake.
More sugar.
All right, wow, we lost half our audience. All right, with that, we'll now move on to a presentation by Brian Flatch, who is with Three Rivers Park District, and this is exciting. So come forward here, we're very excited for the Salem treatment. It's a long time coming, it's been in the works, I know, for many years. So, and we know it will improve the water clarity and quality of Whale Tail Lake, so welcome.
Thank you, everybody. I'm Brian Block, I'm the senior manager of water resources for Three Rivers Park District. And last August of two thousand and twenty-two, I was here presenting the Whale Tail South Basin alum treatment for this project. And the city of Minnetrista expressed interest in being a partner on this project, and assuming at the time that we secure funding for it. And since that time period, Three Rivers Park District was sent in a grant application to the Board of Soil and Water Resources for Clean Water Fund Legacy Dollars. And this was on behalf of the Pioneer Sarah Creek Watershed Management Commission. And in January of two thousand and twenty-three, we found out that we received four hundred and five thousand dollars for this project. It was selected, one of the few projects actually in the metro area of Hennepin County that was selected. It actually scored really high in terms of, out of all of the projects. And so this grant dollars does come with a requirement of a twenty-five percent match. And so the operations or a cooperative agreement, I'm sorry, cooperative agreement was drafted for this project to coordinate partnership of funding that twenty-five percent match. And one of those partners identified in that cooperative agreement was city of Minnetrista with a maximum amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars towards this project. Other partners included Pioneer and Sarah Creek Watershed Commission with a maximum amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. And then Three Rivers Park District was the third partner on this project, not to exceed a maximum amount of thirty thousand dollars. If you add up those three, it will meet that twenty-five ma- twenty-five percent match requirement for this particular grant. There is an opportunity this fall, actually, for me to apply for a Hennepin County Opportunity Grant for the second treatment. And so that potentially could lower some of the cost share for this particular project. So what I'm requesting tonight from the city council is approval of the cooperative agreement. And I'm also here to take any questions that you might have for the project itself. And I do have some slides that I might come into use for answering some of those questions. Just kinda depends on the questions that you guys ask, so.
Thank, thank you.
Yep.
Peter, anything you care to add, or questions you might have?
Well, I'm pretty familiar with it, and I think it's a great project. And it's really exciting to, that we actually got the funding, and so I'd really like to go ahead with this.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And then I asked Brian earlier, you had asked, I think, under the cooperative agreement, there's a section that says that there be a committee, and who will represent the committee? I'm very pleased to say that you can represent the Minnetrista on that committee. So it's basically, and as he explained, kind of a liaison, if there's any questions, between you and the, and the commission, and the committee, and the city. So in your capacity as our representative on the Pioneer Sarah Creek, I thought that would be appropriate for you to be on that committee.
Very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? So just one real quick question, when you do the treatment, then when is the first treatment that you're anticipating?
So the first treatment, actually, if everything goes well with the cooperative agreement, will, is scheduled for next week, as early as next week. And it'll take about three to four days. That's the first dose, the first half dose.
Yeah.
Then the second half dose will leave the spring of two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, and how long will it take before you can actually see the real results?
You'll see the results this summer.
Okay, so, good.
Right away.
All right, great. Well, if there are no other, then I would entertain a motion to cons- to approve the cost-sharing agreement with Three Rivers Park District related to the alum treatment of Whale Tail Lake.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. And thank you for your work on this, Brian, I know it's, it's been a long time coming, so thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, and I wanna thank Jasper, too, for sending the notice out to the public shore landowners and everything on that, too, so that was great, thank you.
Thank you, all right. So now we'll move on to the exciting audit presentation. I say that a little tongue-in-cheek, I know, but. Welcome.
Maybe, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, yeah.
Just give a quick introduction. So Michelle Hoffman with Clifton Larson Allen is here tonight to give a PowerPoint on the results of the audit. I guess from my perspective, I think everything was good, it's a clean audit, so the best you can get, not really anything like stupendous or anything they can give, I guess, but. So, and yeah, as far as our financial performance, she'll get into that a little bit, too, but I think we hit our marks as far as the general fund and enterprise funds, and we'll discuss that in the slides, so.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, thanks, Brian. My name is Michelle Hoffman, and I'm principal with CLA. As Brian mentioned, this year, two percent is our overall audit result. The audit is issued, it's finalized. We just, I know you've seen the electronic reports in your packets, including the annual conference of financial report, which is quite a lengthy document, so I'll give you a report. Certainly, just gonna get on some highlights there, but feel free to interrupt me as I go with any questions, or either during or after finishing the report as well, if you have questions, happy to answer any questions. Just overall, I'm just gonna go over our, some of our required communications we have to the city council. There is also a letter that you have that has some of the more detailed language, but I am just kinda hit the high points of what we are required to communicate to you as governance throughout the audit process and at the conclusion of the audits. And then overall, some, some audit results, not necessarily the actual numbers, but sort of our kind of conclusions, essentially findings, et cetera. And then get a little bit into the financial numbers, so some highlights, some graphs, and kind of summarize where things are at as of December thirty-first, of course. And then just a couple last items that we'll chat about as well. So then required communication to as governance. We do always have to make sure that we remind everyone that an audit provides reasonable but not absolute assurance. You know, we don't take every single transaction and look at and test it. It's a risk-based approach, we use sampling and things like that. So we can't, you know, say, give an absolute assurance that every single dollar and dime that went in and out was tested. So just a reminder of that. Also, the audit does include some significant estimates. You know, there are some very large items in the financial statements that are based on some assumptions, some estimates. As you can see, I have some listed there, of course, nobody really knows how long capital assets are gonna last. Valuation of investments, if they're valued, if they're value. And then some of the liabilities are the bigger ones, when we look out at post-employment benefits. You know, we're kinda making some assumptions as to far as how long people are gonna live, things like that, future costs. Same thing with pension liabilities, right? We're kinda making some assumptions as to how those investments are gonna grow, the discount rates they're gonna get, et cetera. So just a reminder that there is some assumptions or estimates that go into some of those items that are in the financial statements. Accounting policies, I feel like where you were standing here until there's a new one. So this year is no different. We did adopt GASB eighty-seven, GASB being the governmental accounting standards board, that's the standards board that really tells them, you know, how we, how we do accounting as a government entity. So GASB eighty-seven had to do with what leases, or what we are now redefining leases, essentially. We used to certainly have leases as a thing, but they defined them differently as to whether they were considered a liability or an asset of, of the government. And so they kinda redefined and said, in, in summary, and the easiest way to say is, anything longer than a year, if it involves a physical asset, is a lease. And that can be you leasing something from someone, or you leasing something to someone. So the biggest ones you'll see are actually receivables you have that now show up as long-term lease receivables in the form of like cell towers and spaces like that. You're leasing space to cellphone companies to be able to use those. So that was a common one we saw with governments, so you actually have a new lease receivable in your financials that you didn't have in the past, so you will see that. So that was adopted in two thousand and twenty-two. Also, just a note, we always wanted, we would be required to say if there was any disagreements or potentially not cooperation management, certainly it was a very smooth process, so definitely nothing to note there. And then overall, our audit results, as Brian mentioned, we did issue a unmodified or a clean opinion of financials. That is the best opinion we're able to give. It, again, doesn't, I know it doesn't sound very, very exciting, but that is the best opinion we could give. If we felt we couldn't fully complete the items, we didn't have all the information, we would have to disclaim our opinion in some capacity, maybe outward modify our opinion. In addition to doing a lot of testing over the actual numbers and compiling those, we do look at the city's internal controls as well. You know, we don't issue a formal opinion on them, but we do a fairly deep dive into the controls. You know, of course, overall, those numbers, we wanna see everything from day-to-day transactions, you know, how is cash reconciled, how are deposits coming in, how are, you know, disenthoys being paid, to some of those year-end things that really happen once a year and get reconciled in review. So, you know, of course, we wanna make sure there's checks and balances in place for views. If we felt that there was any, any kind of big gap missing in any one area or anything that really was a large room for improvement that we felt you should know as governance, we would include it in that internal control letter as a potential audit finding. We do not have anything we are including, so as we said, there are no exceptions noted with regards to our review of internal control. And the last thing we look at during our testing is Minnesota legal compliance. Of course, there's a whole slew of state statutes that are applicable to the city. And every year, the opposite state auditor publishes an audit guide with a lot of different little things they want us to look at, whether you're investing in certain things you're allowed to invest in, paying invoices on time, et cetera. And if we had anything, any deviations there, we would also include it in our legal compliance letter. And it's really, actually, not that hard to have one invoice get paid late, so it's, it's, you know, it's easier actually to fault through cracks in some of those things, but we didn't find anything. So certainly a testament to say that we also have no exceptions noted with regard to Minnesota legal compliance. All right, a couple of things I wanted to point out, as I just mentioned, we're always up here talking about new standards and new requirements, so these are emerging, so kind of looking forward to next year, but they are big enough. Sometimes there are some that are coming that really aren't gonna impact the city much, we don't hit on too much. But the next one's coming down, we have one next year and one the year after, as far as government auditing or accounting standards. So we have our statement number ninety-six. This is essentially similar to the one I just talked about with leases, well, only it's for subscription-based assets, if you will. So leases, the first leased one was a tangible physical asset equipment. This is for, if you have agreements for longer than a year where you have the right to use some sort of subscription-based software. Of course, you might have, the finance software is an easy one, but you might have things referring to permits, or, you know, the police permit probably has something, you know, different, any little different software you have that if you have a subscription longer than a year, we gotta relook at it, and it might be a long-term asset. So that's just coming as well, so of course, they're always, always adding new scores, but just wanted to mention that there are, that might look a little different as well next year. And the other one for the following year, for fiscal twenty-four, is compensated absences. They, I don't think this is gonna impact the city too much, but they did issue a standard that's revising how it gets, that liability gets measured a little bit. You know, you already have liabilities for that, but it's kind of taking a look at, in the past, some of the criteria used were whether it was gonna get paid out or not. They've kind of adjusted that, and that's not necessarily exactly how it gets measured. So it might increase the liability slightly, but I don't think it will have much of an impact on the city. But that's two years, two years, that will set you a half now, but. And actually, we have some changes coming up in auditing standards as well. These don't change quite as often, you know, we've seen GASB, our accounting standards, seem to always be adding, revisiting how we measure stuff. Auditing standards change sometimes, but actually not as often. So we do have a couple big ones actually coming up. The first one, not as big, these are both effective for fiscal twenty-three, so next year's audit. We are required to take a little bit of a deeper dive into some of those estimates that I mentioned. It won't, this one won't add too much, you know, we already are looking at some of them, but there's just a little bit more documentation will be added as far as testing them. The bigger one is the second one, SAS one forty-five, Statement on Auditing Standard. Understanding the entity and their environment, and really looking at a little bit more of the IT environment. And we already take a look at the, as part of our internal controls, we do take a look at the city's sort of IT controls. But this is, we're gonna have to a little bit deeper dive on the, the finance software, so we'll add a little bit of time for that in fiscal twenty-three and add a little component of reporting as well. We just wanted to mention that, they are, they are adding some things, some required changes to the audit standards. All right, so now we got kind of past all of that, let's take a look at some of the financial results. So here we have the general fund, a five-year lookback. And we have our unassigned fund balance are the light blue bars, and that is the majority of your fund balance in general fund. You have a couple small pieces in assigned, but really, it's mostly unassigned, which is essentially open for your uses, how you, how you wanna keep it. And then the line going across is what that fund balance is as a percentage of your annual expenditures. You know, your policy is to keep that at forty percent of the next year's budgeted expenditures. This is actual, so this is the percent of your actual fiscal twenty-two. So it's in line with the policy, but it's not technically calculated exactly. But you can see, you're just above forty percent there as far as the, the fund balance, which is about two-point-one, two-point-two million, represents about forty percent of your expenditures for fiscal twenty-two. So a little bit of a spend on the last couple of years, certainly fiscal twenty, and you'll see that manifest itself in a couple of other graphs, too, I think, is there was more revenue coming in, those, that was the first year, we got some of those immediate pure exact funds. So more intergovernmental funds that came in in fiscal twenty trickled in as well, fiscal twenty-one, not quite to that same level in fiscal twenty-two. So that's why there was a little bit of a spike there in fiscal twenty. All right, general fund revenues, this is just a breakdown of, of, you know, where your revenue is coming from. Certainly, it's no surprise that that Navy Blue, the property tax is quite the majority. If you look off to the right, there's a little gap there, it feels like it doesn't go to a hundred percent, not because investment income is now on the left, which means it was negative this year, which was very common for most entities we saw. We all kind of know what, what the market was like in fiscal or calendar year twenty-two. So there was actually negative investment income for the year, and that's why that graph is kind of actually slid over just a little bit, but. Otherwise, overall, and then you can see, I mentioned fiscal twenty there, the yellow is your intergovernmental revenue, so that's your federal grants. It could be state grants as well, but.
So question, so investment income is basically just on paper at this point?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, exactly, it's, you know, obviously.
Just to clarify, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, the market value adjustment, now, we still had investment income, but it nets out against the.
Yep.
It's only a negative if you were to cash it in and add a negative, so yeah, okay.
Yep, so obviously, we're hoping that'll bounce back, but.
And is the intent to hold it to maturity then?
Yeah, we pretty much hold all our investments to maturity, so we won't recognize the loss, or whatever, sort of, but you're at par, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in general, obviously, you're, you're somewhat restricted to what you can invest into, so it's fairly safe, and to that extent, I'm saying, so that once, once you really hold it to maturity, you're typically not at much risk of a loss.
Sorry, I actually did have to.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
Why do we go out like up to five years if this is kind of a emergency fund, or to try and get more return, or?
For the investments, you're saying?
Yeah, for, yeah.
Um, it's more, the reason we do some of the longer-term investments, just more to, to ladder, have different things maturing at different times as far as some, versus having it, you're saying, like, all like in like a money market or liquid account? Is that what you're referencing?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, if we're gonna need it at some point. Do we need to keep it more liquid, or? Sounds like we don't, or?
And there is a decent amount that is kept liquid, but usually we'll put out, if there's amounts we can use over time, or even time it out with different projects or whatever, so there'll be things that are invested at six months, a year, two, three, you know, whatever. So a lot of that's just, you know, when rates are low, it's to get a little better investment income or whatever, so.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
And like I mentioned, the fiscal twenty, you can see the yellow is your intergovernmental revenue, most of that is federal. And that is where we kind of had that spike in, in COVID, really funding coming in right at the end, and it kind of came in in May and Ju- in June of two thousand and twenty and into the fall. And then general fund expenditures, again, you know, pretty consistent, nothing really groundbreaking here, certainly. Your bright yellow there, which, well, those colors are looking different here than my version. But public safety, of course, makes up over half your expenditures in general fund. Again, no surprise, that is your biggest, biggest department, but overall, the last five years, that, you know, all four of those, or five of those categories, a little bit of other in there, have been remaining very valuable.
And again, just for clarif- clarifying for the audience, if you will, public safety includes not just our public safety department, which is called, but it also includes fire.
Yep, absolutely.
And a fire contract, so it's, it's all of our public safety, so.
And building inspections.
And building inspections.
Kind of, I was gonna say, these little ancillary things that they do, that are related to those departments.
All right.
Absolutely, yeah, so certainly a big, big operation. And just another kind of take a look here, person of revenues, expenditures, and your, your unassigned fund balance, again, in the general fund. Fiscal twenty, again, you can see that was kind of the, the one year where revenues really exceeded expenditures. Fiscal eighteen and nineteen were pretty much more breakeven. Twenty-one expenditures were just a tick up, and twenty-two, they were higher than revenues. Most of that was budgeted for, so also shouldn't be a surprise. I did have expenditures exceed revenues, which of course is why our Navy Blue bar did go down a bit. All right, let's take a look at our enterprise funds. So this does have all three of the funds on it, just taking a quick look at your unrestricted net position. Of course, a fairly large amount of your net position in these funds is in what we call invested in capital assets, essentially net-related debt, it is very, they're very, you know, not all of them, but some of them related to water fund, are a little more capital-intensive, capital, you obviously have infrastructure you have to invest in. But it is sitting in your equity, it is equity, it's assets, but obviously very difficult to spend that. So we kind of take a look at your, your spendable portion, which we call, which is considered and categorized as unrestricted. So there was some, you know, last couple of years, some declines in all three funds, but all three funds did have slight increases there in fiscal twenty-one, fiscal twenty-two in our unrestricted net position, all ending at positive net position. So we have our water fund, you know, it kind of looks like there's a lot going on at first, then. So the bar graphs are just your revenues and expenses. So revenues being the dark one, light blue being your expenses for each of the last five years. So obviously, as you can see, we have our operating revenues did exceed operating expenses in the water fund for fiscal twenty-two. The net of those is the yellow kind of line trying to say, what is our operating income? Is it positive, is it negative? So it was negative in fiscal twenty-one, you can see it's about negative two hundred thousand. It as, because revenues, of course, are higher than expenses this year, it is a little bit of a positive. The red line is that same amount, but we take out depreciation. So depreciation is considered an operating expense, so it is impacting it, it's often making it negative. It's usually the only reason it's negative, not always, but, and we do take it out, just take a look at it. It's a real expense, so we want you to see that what your operating income is with it, but it's obviously not really a cash-related item. It's something you've already invested in, it's assets that are depreciating. It's not really hitting your, you know, impacting your ability to sort of cash in, cash out, operate. So we do kind of take a look at it both ways. So once you take depreciation out, as you can see, that red line, all five years, has been positive. I think the low point there is about four hundred thousand. So if we take out depreciation, just to get kind of an eye, a more on, a little bit more of the cash rate, not exactly cash-based, just put a little bit more, what that looks like. So of course, in fiscal twenty-two, they're both positive, so. Question? Yeah? Oh, no, okay.
Go ahead.
Sewer fund, obviously, we have kind of the same thing, so the, the red and yellow line, I forgot where it is, they're getting the old start to see, I'm sorry. Are, you know, mirror each other if we take out the depreciation. Expenses have exceeded revenues in the sewer fund, kind of each of the last five years. There are a few miscellaneous things that are not included, these are operating revenues, operating expenses. There are a few items that are considered non-operating that are still in these funds. They're not very large, though, but there is some additional items. But overall, expenses were exceeding revenues in the last five years in the sewer fund. Sewer fund does still have a fairly strong net position, though, but it's just kind of, just taking down just a little bit the last few years. There we go. Last one, stormwater fund, obviously, dollars are a little bit smaller here, we're talking kind of four hundred thousand in total. Revenues, expenses, we're pretty much right on, expenses were just a tick higher than rep- or revenues. And then you can see, obviously, operating income was essentially zero because of that, and then without when we take depreciation out, it's up closer to two hundred thousand. And I will say, it's, it's very common for your operating income, when you include depreciation, to be negative. Some of the, you know, kind of thought process behind that. Um, some of the, you know, kind of thought process behind that is if it was positive, that means that you are essentially, and it depends a little bit on your community too. If you have a lot of growth coming up and you've invested in some capital assets, if the depreciation is not causing your income to be negative, you're essentially charging now for all your current residents, stuff you put in place for like future residents. So some of that theory is, do we want to do that or do we kind of, you know, we know it's going to be negative, but as we grow, it'll recover, it'll kind of keep getting to that positive point, right? So that's kind of the theory behind depreciation, if you say, well, if we're investing in stuff knowing that this is a twenty-year, citizens are coming on, et cetera, if, if we're covering that right now, that means we're basically like charging customers that are here now to pay for that, that we've invested for future customers. So, you know, obviously, there's kind of a whole scale of how you manage that, but that's just, you know, thinking about it in that respect as far as, well, we're negative, why is it negative? Alright, so future debt service, just a couple more here, just taking a look at this, um, overall, the, the scale is, you know, the, a little bit, um, I don't say zoomed in, but it's like about a five hundred thousand dollar access there. So your debt service, as it is now, is certainly going down, but the, about from about two million down to one point seven. Um, this is as of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, so we have our actual twenty-twenty-two and then our next five years projected. Uh, we do have a note down there because, as you know, you have issued, since then, issued another debt issuance. So that is not included here because this is as of December thirty-first. So while right now they are going down, you do have a subsequent, um, event there, as you can see in the bottom, for about six point eight million, twenty-twenty-three A bonds. So, um, there is, that, that will obviously be added next year. Uh, there's a couple of quick gra- uh, graphs that, uh, to compare some neighboring cities. So this is your tax per capita comparison. This, this is twenty-twenty-one, uh, twenty-twenty-two data for like your, all other cities and stuff isn't out yet, so we do have kind of a one-year look back here. Uh, but taxes per capita, as you can see, and this is always a fun one, uh, but. Menetrist is like, looks great, looking good. So, uh, some of your neighbor cities, I know, I, I mean, the past, I believe, Orno used to always be less than you guys, but they've.
They were.
Couple, yeah, the last couple here, this past year, they, they made some changes, so. Um, I think there was the one that was, that was below you, but now they increased their, their tax levy. So now you're sitting actually the lowest of these, uh, six cities that we have here, so. And again, this is twenty-twenty-one, so we are kind of in that. And then current expenditures, uh, again, twenty-twenty-one for the officer state auditor, again, adding kind of those neighboring cities, taking a look, and you're really close there, right on par with kind of Medina and Mound and Shorewood. And then we got, you know, Orno kind of back up now, they had been lower in the past, I believe, along Lake, so. Yeah, so looking at, you know, really competitive there and how you, how you're kind of lining up. And, and again, here, you can kind of take this data too, every community is different, every community has, is in a different place doing things. So it's just, it's interesting to see, but certainly would just take, kind of apply to, to where you feel you're at and what, how is views to you.
I think the relevant point there is that any, a neighboring, uh, someone in our city says, oh, we're a high-tax cities, and say, well, you could live in, fill in the blank.
This one?
I think we're doing pretty good, right?
And I know our tax rate has gone down too, so.
It's under twenty percent now.
Yeah, so which is really good.
Yeah, so that brings me to the end of any questions?
No questions? Peter, come on.
I don't know, my eyes closed.
It was a quick one, lots of information, but, uh, thank you very much. Um, let's see, do we need to accept the audit?
Yeah, it could be a motion.
If you happen to come, think of any questions afterward, um, you know, feel free to pass them on, we're happy to answer any more information if anyone has any additional questions.
No, but thank you, um, you did a great job, really good, talked really fast, but you did, you did a great job. So counsel, is there a motion then to receive and accept the twenty-twenty-two, um, financial audit?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor, any further questions? Going once, going twice, all those in favor signify with a aye. Aye, all those agree, all those opposed, motion passes, uh, for O, thank you again.
Thank you for having me.
Yes. So next we'll move on to, um, there is no persons to be heard, we had, um, a couple here, but they were taken care of prior to the meeting. So, um, they had their questions answered and they'll be taken care of. Uh, next we'll move on to consent agenda, and that is, um, are there any that you wish to remove? Otherwise, it's a short one this time. Approve city council regular meeting minutes from May first, twenty-twenty-three. Approve our liquor license renewals for Burl Oaks Golf Club and West Tonka Recreation Association for twenty-twenty-three and twenty-four. And then a resolution to approve claims and approve, uh, increase in funding for the General Services Task Order Agreement with AE two S. Any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through D?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor, further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. We do have one public hearing this evening, and there's a huge crowd here for that, so. So, um, I'm gonna hand it over to Dawn. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Counsel, as you know, we took away the public hearing, but Buddy Boy or Cox Culinary is, um, requesting a new liquor license. They are adding off-sale onto theirs, as you guys know, their business is growing. He would like the opportunity to possibly for takeout orders or something like that, to be able to sell a bottle of mine with it. Um, with that, we have done the background checks, police department, we've checked in with them on it. Everything looks good there, so as long as you guys approve that, we'll be like, yeah. Any questions?
Nothing? Okay, comments? Okay, none? Alright, then, I'm gonna open the public hearing, since we have to have a public hearing. There's nobody here to speak for or against it, so I'm gonna close the public hearing and move it back to counsel. Um, are you in favor of approving the, uh, new combination on sale, off-sale liquor license for Buddy Boy Fine Barbecue? Thank you, Mr. Vickery, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor, further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes for O. So next we'll move on to our business items, and that's, uh, Parks Commission and Planning Commission appointments. We had, um, during our work session, we interviewed the two applicants for our two park commission open seats. Um, I also had the opportunity to speak with Sarah Hussain, I, I should say, we voicemail back and forth. And, uh, she is currently serving, um, until we can find replacements for the park commission, as a park commissioner, as well as a planning commissioner, and she is very willing to step down from the park commission. So my recommendation is to approve the two applicants, um, Ann and Brett, and I have to remember their last names, but, um, for our park commission. And I would recommend that Ann be appointed for the three-and-a-half-year term, because this term that we're appointing her for would expire in December, the end of December. So rather than having her go through this process again in just six months, I'm recommending that we approve her for the three-and-a-half years. And then Brett, for the, um, remainder of the term, I think it's two years, if I'm not mistaken, roughly two years. Any questions? Okay, so do you, I suppose you need the last names.
Randall, Randall and Brett Hughes.
Yeah, thank you. So we have Ann Randall and Brett Hughes, um, to be our two new, uh, park commissioners. Is there a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms., Mr., oh, um, Mr. Vickery, alright. All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. And then we had one gentleman apply for the open, um, alternate seat on the planning commission, and that was Luke, last name again?
Rodley? Ragoli?
We'll just say Ragoli, we're thinking that's similar to his name. And so he would be appointed to the remaining term of the second alternate. Thank you, Mr. Vickery, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Refkin seconded that, all those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. And then next, um, we move on to our professional service agreement with, um, LE AST for Law Enforcement Wellness Services. Who wants to take, Ellie?
I'll start out and then Paul can take team, once I'm done here. Um, as you may know, over the past several years, the impact of mental health, specifically on law enforcement employees, has been a topic of conversation. Unfortunately, many communities have seen the impact of mental illness in this profession. Chief Falls and I have had numerous discussions over, during this past year regarding how to best support the mental health of the officers here in Menetrista. Tonight, we are proposing implementing a mandatory annual mental wellness check-in for our law enforcement employees and approve a contract with LE AST for their services. Staff reached out to several communities who have implemented a policy and program, um, Corcoran, Bloomington, and Minnetonka to inquire about possible companies that perform the annual mental health check-in service. Based on the references, we reached out to three vendors who provided us with proposals. And based on the level of service and the conversations about availability, staff is recommending going with LE AST for these services. You'll see in the highlights of the contract, uh, in your memo, which have been reviewed by attorneys in Sala, one of the main highlights that Paul and I found to be beneficial was that therapists and counselors have experience in law enforcement, and they're familiar with the struggles of police personnel. In addition, the officers will have access to whatever counselor they feel is the best fit. I believe they have ten counselors, um, employed with them. The cost of this contract will be around five to seven thousand, and that will depend on the utilization of the follow-up sessions. In addition to this conversation, there's a public safety duty disability bill that was passed by the House on May first, um, which would require cities to implement methods to process and cope with stress and trauma. Many cities are implementing this policy, um, in preparation of this bill being passed. So I would be happy to answer any of your counsel questions, otherwise I know Chief Falls, if you would like to say anything too.
Sure, uh, Madam Mayor and Counsel, uh, this is something that, uh, we've been discussing for a long time. I think I mentioned it after I came back from the FBI Academy, this was one of the, uh, areas of focus while we were there, officer wellness. Uh, this has been an issue, I think, not just in Minnesota, but around the country for, over the past couple of years, it's really been exacerbated by COVID and civil unrest and things like that. So it was an issue prior to that, and it's gotten much worse. Um, and so they're just learning, you know, they're spending a lot more time researching this topic. And so through that, they've learned a lot more about it. And so they've learned that it isn't just, you know, everybody knows that if you're faced with some huge unusual critical incident, you're going to be probably negatively affected by that. But the cumulative effect of the job is what they're finding has a lot of issues with it as well. And up until recently, that wasn't really called out or, or dealt with a whole lot. So, um, as Ellie mentioned, I believe the League, League of Minnesota Cities and Para have been working or looking at this issue because the number of PTSD cases in law enforcement has gone up exponentially in the last couple of years, which is costing cities, uh, a lot of money. So, uh, I think the writing is on the wall that this is going to become a mandatory requirement for cities at some point. Although I, I feel and I have felt for a while that this is a, a very necessary step. Statistically, it's, you know, everybody in the police department, licensed officers will be required to do this if you accept this program, um, once a year. The reality is they're probably not going to use a lot of the follow-up services, but it's nice to know that it's there in the event they need it. Uh, I can think of a couple of cases which I won't go into specifically, that, uh, that would have been very nice to have in years past. So, um, I guess that's about all I can add, I just think there's a, a lot of value in this. Uh, and I know there's some cost upfront, but I think in the long run, we can, we can avoid, uh, much more serious issues down the road with a program like this one.
Thank you, and I know we try and focus not only on the mental well, uh, health, but also on the physical as well, so. And we're looking into that as, um, as well, so, yeah, it's really a necessary, I think. And I think it's going to be mandatory, but even if it isn't mandatory, it's still a good thing for our police officers at a very reasonable cost, so. Questions? Okay, then, um, is there a motion to approve the professional services agreement with LE AST for Law Enforcement Wellness Services?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor, all those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes for O. Um, next we move on to approve our engineering design changes and drainage construction design plans on Westwood Abnu.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that would be me. Uh, Brian, did you get the map? I apologize, there was supposed to be a map attached to it.
Sorry.
That got neglected. We sent, she sent you an email, can you pop that up?
Yeah, sorry.
Alright. Is the pointer?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Sorry.
Can you blow it up a little bit?
Does it get any bigger, Brian, or not?
Well, I can start to view, I think, like the top.
I can start while he does that, um, so. We received a complaint, um, of some, or I should say complaint, but a concerns of water issue, drainage issues, um, along Westwood Avenue, um, the residents. If you can't, Brian, it's fine.
We get the gist anyway. There.
There you go.
There you go.
So the residents here at, um, fifty-five, twenty-five notified WSB that they had some concerns. There's a culvert that flows here that has, um, the water running down, I just lost my computer, um, through here. And we also talked to the neighbor here at fifty, uh, fifteen oh five. Their concern is that they have a lot of water flowing from the area through here with some drainage changes. Um, we talked to them in person, the re- and the reason this took a while to come up is they are snowbirds and just got back in town, not to haggle. Um, so Fosky was talking to them in the interim, trying to get this set up to get an appointment out there. Um, right now, what they're receiving is water coming from this kind of, there's a small ditch line through here. There is a, um, six-inch drainage tunnel that was installed by the city here, um, a few years, uh, probably six, seven years ago, um, to help, there is a big water issue up here, where it was ponding and pooling, uh, soaking up the base of the road. And there's also a, um, sump line coming in here. Um, and their major concern is the water, the high point is here, so they're getting this water here, this water flows also this way. So, right now, the water just kind of willy-nilly flows any which way it wants out of that culvert. There's no divine, divine, defined, um, waterway or anything, so it does migrate into this gentleman's yard here and through there. So what the changes we're proposing to help, um, they would like a hundred percent of the water eliminated, but like we've told them, that's absolutely impossible to eliminate a hundred percent of the water. But we are changing, uh, there's concrete curb and cutter going in here, so it'd be catch basins on here. This will still stay an open, um, system here, so the water migrating from this area can get in. There'll be two rock check jam, check dams, uh, put in here to help slow water flow down, so it migrates slowly. Um, the catch basin that is designed to come here will have a different grade on it, which will allow water to overflow. It'll, it will go down in there, but allow most of it to go. And there'll be a design change that this area would drop about probably one to two percent grade, so this water can now flow this way. So, instead of coming backwards, so this water would come here, we would put some water through here. It would migrate around here, down, out to the drainage, um, it's not on this map, but there's a design drainage spot right here that was on there. Um, this water, instead of turning here, we'd put a valley gutter across here to keep most of the water flowing here. We did notify that on heavy rains, that this water here, there's no guarantee that it's gonna, you know, continue to flood. It can turn and come this way, um, during heavy rainfalls, so they will get, you know, excess water. But this should cut down an enormous amount of water. Um, I don't think we can truthfully say a percentage-wise, but it will cut down on their, uh, water. Um, talking here, the water that flows down through the, uh, drainage way, we'd be looking at clearing out some trees and actually defining a small swale through here. Um, nothing on the scale like we did up on, um, through the Hoffman property. This would be only probably maybe a foot, uh, sixteen inches deep at the most, three feet wide, just to kind of, just to give it a little bit of a path to keep flowing constantly. As it exits out here, we would have a, kind of a rock pool, um, set up here to help slow it down, a little bit of a rock waterway, and then another check dam to let the water release. It does pool in this gentleman's backyard, he says done that for years, he's fine with that. Um, he was happy to hear that with the concrete curb and gutter, it will no longer be running in this way, so that will cut down. Um, you know, and we're really not changing anything, instead of the water coming to the wetland this way, we're just bringing it in a different direction. So we're not changing the amount of water going into the wetland at all, but it's just basically changing, um, the path that it gets there. So, um, what we're, you know, looking at is the design change for the engineering for the project. So what we're, you know, looking at is the design change for the engineering for the project would be to kind of redo the drafting here to add this valley gutter, drop this down. There's not much of a, I think it's one sheet design change. The biggest factor will be this drainage way here, which will be, you know, have to be designed and looked at and put out. So basically, what the, what we're kind of estimating to thirty thousand would be for the design and the build of the drainage way here, adding the rock check dams and this, you know, kind of this valley gutter in here would all come out since it is stormwater out of the stormwater fund. So I'll take any questions that you can have. I know it's kind of a long, short, whatever you want to consider, it's nonsense, but.
Long, long.
You know, but I'll take, you know, I'll take some, you know, questions if you have them.
Thank you, Gary. Good details, all. Good details.
I apologize, the map wasn't attached.
I think we clearly understand about where the water, very, thank you very much, Gary. Yep, good, good understanding, yep. Council, questions?
Sounds good.
All right.
So what we're looking forward to, just a motion to move forward with those engineering design changes and then to start the drainage swale construction design, you know, to help improve all those drainage issues.
And can we, and this will come out of stormwater fund?
Yes, mostly will come out of the, the engineering design for the road change will probably come out of, will probably be out of the main road fund, but we are kind of running a little under budget, so we should break even on that, hopefully. But the, the water, the swale here and the added other stuff that should all come out of the stormwater budget, considering it is, you know, stormwater related.
So when you're saying thirty thousand, is that including the design changes, drainage construction design plans?
That's what we're hoping, yes.
And also the work?
Yeah, it's, it's complete with the design and the actual construction.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If, if I may, I think, I think tonight we're just looking at getting this designed, and then I think we're gonna approach Latour to see if they can do a change order. That'll come back at a future council meeting.
Okay.
If Latour's numbers maybe don't match up with what our thoughts are, we would then go out and get a quote or quotes for this.
Correct.
So you're really just approving the engineering.
Just to get the engineering and the design done, so we can put it out.
Yeah, okay.
For the ditch.
Of the ditch itself, yes.
Okay.
And that one-page change for the engineering, for the, for the grade change.
Yeah, the one-page change is, is really not a huge amount. And that we have contract quantities that we would be able to accommodate the valley gutter. And so that one, we would just use our existing line item for that for bid. So that one, I don't know if we need to bring in through a change order or not. It would be more the ditch work that we would.
Yeah.
Get a record of that.
Okay, all right. Any questions? Good with this? So then a motion to approve the engineering design changes and drainage construction design plans on Westwood Avenue as presented here this evening. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. That wraps up our business items, so we'll move on to staff. Mr. Krugel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make this brief. I have a Juneteenth update because there's some legislation going through right now, potentially, that you might see some memos of understanding at the June fifth meeting. So I just wanted to kind of plant that seed, so it's not a surprise. Juneteenth is approved as of August first of twenty twenty-three right now. But there's another bill and a companion bill in the Senate that approves it immediately. So we might have about, I don't know, less than a month to do these MOUs. So just, it's kind of a heads up, just that these might be on the agenda on the fifth. They might not be depending on if it gets approved or not.
So just real quick, what Jasper was talking about, the memorandum of understanding for our, our unions, they, they don't have Juneteenth in it in their contracts, so we have to change that. And it would just be a memorandum of, of understanding just for this one year.
And then it'll be in the contract.
And then going forward, it'll be in the contract because we're redoing all of the union contracts. So just, so.
I, I just don't want anybody to be surprised on the agenda, like why are we doing four MOUs?
The only other thing that we need to keep in mind is if it's effective this year immediately, that changes our June nineteenth meeting. And we can't do it on, we can't move it to the Wednesday like we've been doing because that's LMC conference. And we may not be able to move it to Tuesday either because of other commitments already made. So we might have to move, if, if that happens, we might have to move it to maybe the fourth Monday?
Twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth, so just.
Is there planning commission that day?
There would be, yeah, there would be that day, yeah.
So I think David said he already had something on the agenda for that.
So if it happens, we'll have to, we'll have to have a conversation about the next meeting at that June fifth meeting to see when it works, you know?
Right.
Might have to be that.
We should know by June fifth, so just come prepared.
Yep, they're already prepared.
The problem is we don't have a meeting, the first meeting in July, so our next meeting is the seventeenth. So I don't know, maybe we even move it up rather than back.
Like the sixteenth or not necessarily Friday, because that would be horrible.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Actually, any day that week before is horrible for me, so it doesn't really matter.
It could be whatever we determine, so.
Okay, well, but just come, come with your calendars. All right.
And the last thing I have is just the MediaCom franchise agreement update. So I've been working with Robert Voss from Kennedy and Graven to kind of get the ball rolling with this. We've had a little bit of correspondence back and forth. We, we kind of submitted that we, you know, basically what we want, what we can do. Quite limited. There's some information or clauses in the current agreement that describe some build-out areas. Those areas have been built out already, or they will be with Midco. So a lot of that stuff that I think was controversial in the past is now just going to be removed from the agreement. The big thing, I think that, I don't know if there's a differing opinion right now on it or not, but MediaCom's really just pushing a five-year extension, not an extension, a new contract, but only for five years, which means then we'd have to look at it again in five years. I think our sense is that we want a ten-year agreement, so we're kind of just going back and forth on that. But it's, it's actually probably a lot simpler than I think what a lot of people maybe expected just because of the Midco build-out, because I think that was the big piece that we didn't necessarily hold them to leading up to this, so.
Difficult to hold them to.
It is, no doubt. And just the way that it's written in the agreement, and from what I understand, the, the current agreement that we have was just an extended agreement from almost twenty years ago now. So there's some old relic language. So we're working through that. It's on schedule. If there's things of substance, Mr. Voss was going to be here tonight, but I kind of said, well, there isn't much to report. Let's just, I can give a brief update. So we're working on it. There should be something of substance, I think, in the next sixty days, is what, what we kind of, the timeline that we set. So more to come, and yeah, we'll, we'll give information as it comes out. That's all I have.
All right, great.
Okay, so you know I hate long contracts. I mean, a lot can happen in ten years, especially in that world. And what if we wanted to get rid of them altogether and we wanted to have Midco for everybody?
Um, so.
Midco does some cable. This is just the cable.
So it's a.
It's not internet at all.
Well, they can put in internet, but it's just the cable franchise.
Yeah, so I can give her this a brief synopsis. So this is for video services. The FCC determines that everybody that provides video services for a municipality has to have one of these franchise agreements. So they can't, it's not like we can't just kick them out. They provide the service. We need to have it legally. If Midco wanted to provide video services, which they don't, they only do internet and fiber, they would be required to basically have the same agreement as MediaCom. So it's really what we care about in the agreement is the franchise fee amount and the peg fee amount. So those are the two kind of big pieces. And then we want to protect our right-of-ways and make sure that if they're doing any work in our right-of-ways, they're restoring it to the conditions that we determine. Those are the big components that we want to make sure are in there. But yeah, it's, it is a long-term agreement, but it's also somewhat expensive, time-consuming to renew it regularly. But, you know, if, if, if we want a five-year agreement, we could, we could definitely have that conversation.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll be able to discuss it, so, yeah.
Like you said, I think the most important thing is the peg and the franchise fees, so make sure.
And I think we're charging as much as we can.
Yeah.
And we'll continue to.
Yeah, and.
Yeah.
You keep in mind the residents that get the service paid, ultimately paid, but it's generally just a few dollars or whatever, so.
They do, and I've, I've negotiated one of these before, been part of it. And there's been, you know, council that's sympathetic to the residents that are paying it. But if you reduce your, your fees, the MediaCom will just scoop that up. So you won't see the savings, so.
Yeah, right. Okay, council updates. Peter?
I don't have anything to report, so we talked about the.
Yep, okay, good.
Okay, the Leslie Center is up and running, and I'm back, back, going to the board meetings tomorrow. Just something, in case you're interested, they're gonna have something at ten thirty on to stream or not to stream, in case you want to know how to get rid of your cable. I don't know, they've changed the format of their, their Gazette, which is not a big deal to anybody who isn't reading it, but it actually is a very nice update. They did a very good job, and I was surprised that they were able to pull it off as well as they did. This is really excellent. They are working on ways to cut costs and to, to look at the activities even more carefully than we did last year as to what makes money, what doesn't, how many people are attending things. They're starting to actually put numbers with things. That's a huge positive, a big step forward. I think the, the new president is going to do a really good job. She has quite the background. She's run businesses before. She had a coffee shop in Colorado for like eight years. And she has a very nice way about her to get people to do things that they don't want to do. So all jayson.
I just had one question. If you look at that, it says meet the mayor of Mound.
Where's Mrs.?
I was gonna say, is it only mayor or Mound mayor?
No, but, because they're in Mound, and, and so, but if you would like to speak, I can certainly set that up. I would have no trouble. They would love doing that.
I was just wondering if there was some, well, we just had our state of the city address, as you know. So I mean, we've reached out to our residents, and I wouldn't need to. I was just wondering what the deal was, so to speak.
Um, I think he just want, I think they wanted to have somebody from Mound so that they could talk to him about possibly getting future contributions.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, he can be on there, that's fine.
All right, Jasper and I attended the Mound Fire Commission meeting last Thursday, the eleventh. The Mound Fire Department has gotten some new technology. They added a digital dashboard to the Bay Area, which is basically just a very large TV that scrolls information they need, such as the schedules, the calendar, the duty officer schedule, announcements, equipment status, as well as if a call comes in, the whatever is scrolling on the TV immediately switches over to the call information, the location where it is, if there's any traffic, which in this area, probably not that relevant. But in general, does that. And then it also will switch over for severe weather, so they get the updates on that on the big screen. It will also show what firefighter has responded to the call and what engine went out. The initial setup for it was a thousand dollars, and then the yearly cost for the controller, which is what puts everything on the TV, is seven hundred dollars. They talked about possibly eventually adding another one, so it's in the office area, but right now they're just working with one. If they do add another one, the initial setup cost, they don't pay that again, they would just pay the other, another seven hundred dollars for each controller that they get. They are also upgrading their national reporting system software to Image Trend Elite, which will allow all the information obtained on the initial report from Hennepin County to be transferred into the mandatory Minnesota fire incident reporting system, which Vicki currently enters everything in manually from Hennepin County and everything that their firefighters put in. So now she'll still have to input the report that the firefighter, firefighters put in and who responded, but a lot of the other information automatically transfers over. So it'll take away half of her input time, which right now, put it all together, is about three weeks. So it'll go down to about one and a half. So it'll be great for her and everybody, because then the information just transfers and you don't risk anyone typing it wrong.
Right.
And then Hennepin County updated their automated dispatch calling. So the fire department now needed updated pagers that get at least two stations. And the old Motorola Fives only got one station. So they got twenty new Motorola Six pagers that get multiple stations. So now a page comes out on the one station, and then all updates go to a different station versus before everything was on the one station. So you were getting the initial call and all the updates on the same system that was also getting more initial calls. So they get the initial call and they switch over to a new station. Apparently those are five hundred dollars each to get new ones. The firefighter pay from November twenty-two to April twenty twenty-three was seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents for the thirty-nine officers. So as Chief likes to say, it's the best deal because we, their budget numbers average a hundred and ninety-three dollars per household versus the Minnesota average, that is two hundred and sixty-eight dollars per household. Next meeting, we will start budget discussions. And the events for twenty twenty-three, it's officially a hundred years for the Mound Fire on December twenty-third. They will have the Fish Fry and Dance on June third, and you can buy, you buy tickets now from the firefighters or in the office. They'll have shirts, swag, a bunch of stuff. And then the Fire Prevention Open House will be October fourth, and they are hoping the new engine will be there for that.
Can you send me that information?
Yep. And I have a St. Body Fair meeting this Thursday, which I will be attending.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, as always, thorough, good report. So we attended, Kathleen and I also attended the Personnel Committee meeting, where we discussed, which we will be doing later on in a closed session, performance review. And also we discussed the wellness issue. And we're continuing to look for police officer, and hopefully something will come up soon. We're, we're hopeful. But I know just talking to other community leaders, it's, it's a struggle. And not only just recruiting, but then also retention. And so there's some things going around in different communities as to what they're doing for retention. We can look at some of those suggestions or ideas as well. We also had our bus tour meeting to talk about the route and all of that. There's still just two open seats, I believe, or one?
And there's two.
Two, so.
Two or three.
If anybody's interested, you gotta sign up right now, or they will be gone. And I attended the Northwest League. We actually had the chief from Rogers there speaking to us, so that was interesting. I, I'm assuming you know who he is or know him. Yep. Nice guy, great speaker, so we learned a lot of things. And then just FYI, the groundbreaking for MackinTunes is next week, if anybody can attend. I've already kind of let you know, but it's, again, another exciting event in our community, so I'm sorry.
Trista Day as well?
It's Tuesday, yes.
No, Trista Day as well.
I'm sorry, yes. So, well, first of all, the groundbreaking is next week, but the Trista Day is on, on the twentieth. So coming up from eleven o'clock till two o'clock, it's gonna be great weather. We're, it's going to be, right? I mean, no, no questions asked. We put in the order, so, so anyhow, come on out for that, and that's all I have.
Mayor Whalen?
Yes.
I'm, I'm wondering if, if the council would like an update on some engineering items that are going on.
Yes, thank you.
So the overlay project is in full swing. The contractor had a paving crew available, and so they, they went up to Kings Point Road today and got that part paved. So that part's done. Other than that, they've been finishing up concrete work in Painter's Creek and Sunny Brook. They started in Turtle Creek. They started pouring in Turtle Creek this week, removals were last week. So the, the, the concrete crew needs a little bit of time to catch up. So we're gonna, they're gonna hold off on doing removals on Hunter's Trail until they can get that time between removals and replacement condensed a little bit. So we're probably at least three weeks out before we start seeing the mill and overlay part of the project taking place. But similar to the concrete work, they'll just start in one project area and move their way around, so. So that one's a good underway, and, and hopefully will be wrapped up here in the, in the coming month, month or so. And then the reclamation project, the contractor indicated that it would be mid-June at the earliest before they start that project. So once we get that date pinned down, have a pre-construction meeting, we'll notify the residents accordingly.
Is that the original timeline? I thought they were supposed to start like mid-May, am I wrong?
That's a good, so we, we provided a fairly large window for the contractor to utilize. And, and we do that in order to try to get the, the best pricing with, with a, with a hard. Um, with, with a, with a hard completion date, so, um, we don't anticipate that that'll be a problem with them starting in, in mid-June.
Okay.
Um, and then the, the reconstruction project, uh, we've been in contact, as, uh, Public Works Director Peters indicated, we've been in contact with some residents, both for, uh, Drainage Point at the, at Westwood Avenue there, um, as well as blending in some of the Boulevard, getting rid of some of the ditches. The intent of the design was to, um, keep the construction corridor as, as small as possible, but was, we're hearing from folks that want that little area filled in, we'll go ahead and, and look at doing that. Um, tree removals, uh, won't begin until after Memorial Day, and then construction will start mid-June. Uh, the contractor will start on Eastview and then move south through the, the project corridor through there. Um, so we'll be, we'll be, uh, residents should expect to get a construction kickoff newsletter here. I think it went out at the end of the day today, so the next couple of days, they should get that. Um, included on, on, on the project correspondence is the communication efforts that we talked to council about. So we have a project hotline set up, because there are still some folks that like to, to call a phone number, um, but we also have a dedicated email address, and what we, what we did with that is, is we just, um, it's a, it's a generic email address that could be used for any of the three projects, and looking forward into any future projects, it can be used for that, so it's minitrista@wsb-eng.com, so that our folks can monitor that email, um, and then either answer the email or, or send it off to the appropriate person. Um, the reason for the one email is that, uh, we had some discussion on staff level, we felt, but that would be the, the easiest way moving forward for the residents, one email address, and we'll, we'll be able to tell, um, you know, where, you know, based on their address, what project they're in, so.
When they, uh, when they send an email, do they get like an automated reply saying, we got it, we're gonna look into it? Or does it just go into it and they?
Um, that's a great question, so, uh, I believe the automatic response is that this, this email is monitored, and we, and with an expectation of when they would get a response. Um, so, yeah, so we're, we're looking forward to, to getting that, that going through. I think that'll help for residents, um, and it'll also help our, uh, construction observer, uh, observer to focus more on the construction observation component, and, and certainly, um, lean into some of these correspondence where it's necessary, but we're, the anticipation is that the bulk of the, the questions that come up during construction can be answered through the, the public education components.
Okay, great, thank you for doing that, I kind of skipped that, so thank you. Um, and yes, it's gonna be a lot of projects, so it's good to get those updates, good to hear. Um, so with that, uh, that concludes all of our business items and, um, reports, so we're gonna now, um, go into a, a closed session. The closed session is to, uh, discuss the evaluation performance of an individual who is subject to this authority. So, with that, I'm going to close our regular meeting and go into.
Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Have entertained a motion to go into closed session?
Okay, thank you, so, um, I do need a motion, I can't just do this on my own, thank you. All right, um, is there a motion to go into closed session for this reason?
Some would.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery, and thank you, Ms. Refkin, seconded that, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes four oh. So I'm gonna just hold off and let everybody clear the room that doesn't need to be here. Okay, so now we're in the open, regular meeting again, I don't have to open again, because it's still open. So now I need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
Some would.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, so Kathleen made that, and Peter seconded that, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes four oh, the regular meeting is adjourned, and we will see you all on the fifth again.
Or at Trista Day.
Or at Trista Day.
There will be food.